This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order this special town council meeting for April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. It's the first in the series of town council budget workshops. I think most of the people who are logged on to this meeting were logged on to the earlier, so I am going to dispense with the virtual meeting warning and go right into the please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Fishpine.
Here.
Laughin.
Here.
Morone.
Here.
Morgenstein. Shortell.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Sandri.
Here.
Chairman Sivoni.
Here. The departments on the agenda in order tonight are the law department, the mayor's office, the town council, the town clerk, government TV and program planning. We will start with the law department.
Good evening.
Evening. What do you want to tell us about your budget?
Well, it's pretty much the same. It's not really been, not any changes, dramatic changes. We did receive a question. Do you want me to just address it or how do you want to do that?
Please do. Well, certainly before you leave us, at least address that question.
Okay, so the question was looking at our professional services accounts, whether or not it made sense to hire an additional attorney to put all those services together and first I'd like to say that the professional service specialist account is not attorneys, it's primarily appraisers. Some title searches, some foreclosure fees and that type of thing. But it's actually primarily, it's appraisers for tax appeals and if the town has some interest in purchasing properties or for foreclosure work. So you're really talking about the professional services for both the labor attorney and our other general professional service lawyers account. Labor attorneys for negotiations and for grievances. Where professional services, the, there's, that's where our workers' comp is attorneys paid out of. Workers' comp lawyers are kind of in this world of their own. They speak a different language. You're not going to see someone who does the arbitrations and negotiations do that type of work. So they're really two different people. Additionally, we use a professional service lawyers account also for our title searchers, searches when they're done by attorneys. And we've also gotten other advice from other lawyers on that, particularly in environmental and in ADA. We've had some help out of there. So while we're, you know, certainly would always look to see whether or not it makes sense to do something different than what we're doing. We do think this is the most cost effective way of doing it. You really can't combine those positions together. And, you know, given the fact that if you hired another experienced full-time lawyer to cover these things, you would need to pay for all the benefits and everything. So I don't think in the long run, at this point in time, we would save any money by doing that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council for the law department? Counselor Shortell does not have any questions for you tonight. Any questions from the public for the law department? All right, Attorney Small, you've escaped lightly.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, you too. Next up is the mayor's office, department office thing. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. The only question I'm aware of dealt with the purchase services negotiations line seven twelve. That really is money paid to arbitrators for labor negotiations, settlement of contracts. At this point, we have probably three that will be coming up in the next year. And the number is oriented to the potential for those to be going to arbitration. So that is what that money is used for.
Well, thank you for answering that question. Counselor Shortell has a question for you.
Mayor, there was another question you were not aware of that I asked Mr. Hutt. I asked Mr. Hutt, how many town employees make more money than you? Do you want to guess? Do you want, so let me just back up for a minute. So I'm viewing the town and the board event as a single entity, a single employer, which is how they're viewed from a, from an insurance perspective. So do you, does anyone, do you want to guess what that number is?
No, I don't want to guess.
You know, I know, I'm sorry. I know. I'm putting you in a tough spot. It's, I don't know if anyone wants to put the answer in the chat. All right, I'm just gonna say it because everyone wants to go home and they're, they don't want to deal with me right now.
Thirty-six.
All right, thank you, Consulor Testa with thirty-six. That is the only answer anyone's giving me.
Is it Price is Right rules?
What'd you say?
If Price is Right rules, if we go over.
You don't have to phrase it in a question either. You can just, I don't even know Price is Right. Like, I used to watch that with my grandma when I was like eight. I don't even remember Price is Right.
Nine.
Nine. Okay, we're talking town and board event. All right, nine, we have thirty-six from Consulor Testa, nine from Consulor Fishpine. Consulor Todd, do you have a, do you have a guess?
If Price is Right rules, I'm going with the one dollar bid, one.
All right, all right.
Counselor Shortell, I'm gonna say fifty-two.
Consulor Morone is in at fifty-two. All right, if that's it, Terrence Sivoni is gonna murder me for the decorum here. The Counselor Laughin's dying to guess. He's dying to guess. He just doesn't want to offend many. Go ahead.
No, I was, I was gonna go closer to Morone, like fifty-seven.
Okay.
With all the teachers.
See, that's why you're vice chair. The answer is three hundred and fifty-six.
Wow.
There are three hundred and eleven Board of Ed employees who make more than the mayor. There are forty-five town, now town and public utilities. Now, the mayor's salary is ninety-six thousand dollars, I believe. In all, in all seriousness, we, in my brief time on the council, my five years, we've talked about this. We've never actually done it. We can only do it during an election year, which this is. I think we should raise the mayor's salary. And I'm gonna say that, I'm gonna start by saying that because Mayor Dickinson specifically deserves a raise, specifically. The office deserves a raise, but the mayor himself deserves a raise. Whether you agree with the mayor or not, I don't always agree with the mayor. It's okay. But, you know, I pick up my kids from the YMCA, from swim lessons every night. I drive by, more often than not, that light is on in his office at the, in town hall. You can see it. He's at every single event. Nobody is going to him. Nobody is knocking on his door saying, Mayor, I have this great idea how I'm gonna save money today. All they're doing is asking him for more, more money, more people, more this, more that. So, you know, I think specifically he deserves a raise. And Mayor, I know you, you don't want to raise, you can give the money to charity. You can give it to me. I'll set up an account or Tom or all of us, whatever. But I think that you deserve it. That's the first point. The second point is the office deserves it, in my opinion. I don't think, I think the town and board collectively is a, you want, someone will have to correct me, thirteen hundred employees? Fourteen hundred? I'm not sure of the number. If you factor in everyone, that may, I think that's around the number. I mean, that, you should not be the three hundred and twelfth highest paid employee. I'm sorry. So I, I think the office deserves it. I think the mayor himself deserves it. The mayor doesn't have to keep the money. He can donate it. He can do whatever he wants with it. But I think that we should, and I, and I don't, I don't, I know this came up years ago. It was always, well, let's give ten thousand. No, let's give fifty thousand. Let's make this a legitimate, let's do it the right way. Don't do it incrementally. You know, raise the salary to a hundred and fifty thousand or a hundred and forty thousand. Make it legit. Make it, would it, would it, it still will probably be underpaid at that point. But at least it would be, it would be closer in the ballpark. So I'm saying this, ideally, I would have gone to CCM and gotten the, you know, a list of all the other chief executives in the, in the state and compared that. But I didn't really feel like I needed to do that. Because I'm fairly certain that the mayor is the lowest paid executive in the area. So that's my, you know, there's no motions tonight, but that's something that I think I am probably gonna motion on motions night. Just, you know, increase the mill rate by point oh, 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 one percent to do it. That's how I would do it. I wouldn't do anything otherwise, but I just hope the council thinks about this. And Mayor, I know you're probably not happy with this, so I'm sorry, but I do think you deserve it. So that's all I have. It's more of a comment than a question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, anyone else with questions for the mayor's office? See, nothing from the council. Anyone from the public have questions for the mayor's office? All right, Mayor. You remain on this meeting at your leisure. Next up is the town council. That would be questions for me. I will identify the couple of thousand dollar elephant in the town council budget. There was a request to make Wi-Fi available for counselors so that they could operate their wireless devices in council chambers. Presuming we go back, hopefully, well before this term is over. And we put money in one line to pay for the monthly service associated with having a dedicated data line run into the council chambers. And then the rest of the money in the other line would be for the hardware and labor to install it. So that's the only thing that's different about the council budget.
Mr. Chairman, that would, that would also make Wi-Fi available to anybody in the chamber, correct?
Well.
Or would it not?
No, the initial thought is to have it be secure.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And just available for the council's use.
Well, that's worthy as well. Thank you.
And Counselor Todd actually made the request, and now she wants to talk about it, I bet.
Thank you. I just wanted to say why, why I put the request in. That, one of like the two meetings that I was at in the council chambers, my agenda on my iPad, since we now get them digitally, had not downloaded. And Counselor Sandri was kind enough to give me his login for his Wi-Fi because I thought I had a hotspot and I wasn't working. So anyway, that was the reason for my request, because we have, we have the digital agendas now. I had that issue with downloading it and I just thought if it was relatively inexpensive, we could put that in the budget and Chairman Sivoni kindly got that request put in. So that was where it came from. Thank you.
Questions from the public? All right. That's all for me. I'm not going anywhere. Town clerk, questions for the town clerk? Deb, if you wanted to present first, you can, or we can go right to Counselor Shortell's question.
Go right to Counselor Shortell's question is fine.
All right, Counselor Shortell, have at it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Deb and I were talking about this before. First, I just want to acknowledge this is Deb's first season as the town clerk and she's doing a great job. And the, everything's going really, really well and definitely not the best, you know, time of history to be picking over as town clerk with everything going on. So Deb, great job by you and your staff. This is just a, I guess, just a question that occurred to me, looking at the budget on page nine of the budget book, under the revenue section. There is an account four-two-zero-zero-two, town clerk fees. The projected revenue is nine hundred thousand dollars. My question was really simply, you know, is this, and maybe it's more for the mayor or for Mr. Bose, because Deb and I did talk about this offline. I don't want to answer, she wasn't sure, but, but are you guys watching the revenue coming in that you're projecting? And is that influencing what you're spending? Or is it sort of, are they sort of separate as the year, as the year progresses?
They're very separate. And if you, and if you think about the tax office, tax office brings more revenue than anyone, but it's not tied to what's spent in the tax office. You know, it's revenue that comes in to fund all of the budget. So it is separate. Jim can speak to anything further on that, but it really doesn't relate to what is done in a given office as far as what they can spend. We might be looking at those revenues as far as what we can spend overall in government and look for things to reduce or whatever. But it doesn't relate to that given department. Jim?
Yeah. The mayor, you know, spoke to exactly what I would say. Yeah, we do watch revenue during the year, but it's not equated with the, with the department that's sort of responsible for that revenue or that collects that revenue. So they are kind of separate, separate worlds.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, I was just thinking of a hypoth, it was just a hypothetical, like if that number was, if for some reason that number came in less, you know, it came in at seven hundred and you saw that trend, you know, in month seven or eight, you know, would you be saying, Deb, oh, don't spend that money, but you're, you're not looking at it that, you're looking at it big picture. You're not looking at it that granularly. So that's, that's all. I was just curious. That was my only.
If all revenue, if we saw significant negative variances in all revenue line items, especially taxes, building permit fees, et cetera, et cetera. I think any movement mid-year would be cut across possibly every department. You know what I mean?
Yep. Got it. Thank you. I appreciate that. That was just a hypothetical. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Sherman, and thank you, Deb, again, for everything.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see any other questions from the council for the town clerk. Any questions from the public for the town clerk? Deb, unfortunately, you're not dismissed either. Government TV, who, who is going to reveal themselves from behind the curtain and be the face of government TV tonight? Will that be you tonight, Mayor, or are we gonna have somebody else?
I guess so. I'll, I'll go.
All right. I think there were questions last night for government TV.
I had a question regarding, where is it? Regarding, well, Bob Gross had asked if the position of the director would be filled. I don't have an answer for that. We funded the position. And it's still something, has to be determined. It's tied into what's happening with COVID, what's happening with, with a lot of issues. Certainly also the different type of work being done by the department that is not the same as it was before when, when we were using the cable television channel as, as, and filming from our cameras. But certainly there's work associated with all of the recordings. I go to meeting and then having those recordings able to be used by our television office. There's also a question. I think there was, there was a question, a question about us dealing with all three channels and we, we don't, there's no plan to be dealing with public access. The education channel is separate with the education department and government access, as you know, is channel twenty. So we have no plans to incorporate eighteen, nineteen and twenty all under one roof. Not sure I remember or am aware of anything else on you. Oh, there was, there was a suggestion about uploading, uploading PUC meetings to our website. I'm not sure that's a question for the government channel, but I, I have nothing to respond with. I, I don't know what's involved with that. I, I'm not sure that uploading audio is, is is really a worthwhile exercise, but there's nothing in the budget right now for that.
That seems consistent with what I remember from last night. Counselor Laughin, your question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The, as you're trying to figure out whether to replace, you know, one, one position, is there thought or consideration so that even when Scott was was working, a lot of it was remote, and now we've got two guys, at least two guys, you know, the other Scott and Tom that have been around a while, is there, is there an openness or availability to kind of shifting responsibilities to one or between them that could possibly, and if this is too much of a personnel thing, then let me know. I'm just trying to think out of the box to, you know, maybe we don't have a full-blown on position, but if these guys can take on a lot of the hours remotely, as a lot of the work has been done anyway, in kind of what would be outside of standard office hour times. Is that something that we could think about in order to get all of the job done, save some money and just be more of effective use of time? So I know they have other, other positions outside of, of their roles here at government TV. Is that something at all? I mean, there's a strong internet connection there to the office server. And a lot of it, they've been kind of doing remotely anyway. So I was just wondering if there was some sort of way to, to do that, if, if you are thinking about reducing that office presence.
Well, that, as I've indicated, everything's under review. I've spoken to both of them. I think there are a lot of options that we are definitely considering everything. And not come to a conclusion as yet, but that's, that's certainly very possible.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any questions for the public regarding government TV? All right, seeing none. Moving on to program planning.
I guess I will, Mayor speaking again, I guess I will be speaking to program planning. I, I had a couple of questions that I remember from decrease meeting. One was, there's a question about the decrease in staffing. There's, get the page here.
Mayor, between the new, the new person and Liv Wolf retired.
Up here. Here it is. Okay, sorry.
And here's the personnel.
There's a question about reducing in staffing. As you can see on the title page for program planner, there, it goes from four to three. That is because one seasonal, as a work-study position, one was dropped. There were two in that position. One was dropped. These are high school students who would come in and help with COVID and, and other issues that has disrupted that. We maintain one in the hopes that there will be a return to some normalcy, but so it went to three, but that's because of, again, the high school student, one high school student is, is not budgeted. There was also a question about, now currently, we, the secretarial position is, is paid with a adjustment for out of class. This is the second secretarial position listed on page one. And that is a stipend because work is being done out of class and that is the grant administration. And that position deals with a number of sites, GrantFinder, grants.gov, other organizations that provide, provide listing of grants such as council of government, et cetera, and is very active in writing applications and applying for various grants. Now, there was also a question about an ad that was put in the paper over a small city's block grant, and this is for the housing authority. The the small cities block grant funds are extremely complicated. They end up in being multiple three-ring binders with two or three inches of, of information in each one of them. We typically for all, for all time, we hire an outside consultant to do that work. It's a full-time job doing it. And actually, our bid requires that they, they only could pay if they're successful in getting the grant. So the reason for that, that advertising, searching for the consultant, was that that is the, that is the mechanism, that is the approach we use to apply for and administer the small cities block grant funds. And as you know, we've had three or four of them for the housing authority over the years, and, and we are looking to apply for another one. So that was one question. I believe there was a question about, are there any plans, and this isn't in the budget, obviously, is there any plans to replace Mr. Rowe? And all I can say is Mr. Rowe is irreplaceable. But without any humor, I think we are working well. Person in the job right now is on top of things and we're well, well-served by her work. The other question was regarding the secretarial position that went from in the budget shows forty-two thousand and then it shows twenty-nine thousand ultimately approved. Goes from forty-two to thirty-four to twenty-nine. And that, that really starts with a person who just retired was budgeted. And it was unclear whether we would need twenty-five or thirty hours. She never worked more than twenty-five. So the forty-two thousand really was too high. We, we adjusted that and we were, we had hired someone. Unfortunately, she could not continue in the position. She was hired at a higher classification. A personal issue interfered. Unfortunately, she couldn't continue. And so now A personal issue interfered. Unfortunately, she couldn't continue. And so now we have a new person in the position, and that person comes in at minimum step. So that results in the twenty-nine eighty-one. So I think that I think that covers all the questions I'm aware of.
All right. Any questions from the Council? And seeing none, any questions from the public regarding the program planning department budget? Well, folks, that is all we have on our workshop agenda tonight. And there being no further questions regarding those departments, I am going to declare this meeting adjourned. Thanks for signing on. Have a happy Tuesday for what's left of it.